I'd like to call a meeting of the Willets City Council order for December 14th. We all rise and join in the pledge. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, let's do a roll call, Kathy.
Okay.
Yep.
Councilor Stransky?
Yes.
Madrigal?
Here.
Ornestein?
Yes, here.
Mayor Burr?
Here. Two things I'd like to do off agenda tonight. First of all, here a couple of weeks ago, we lost a wonderful member of the community, Lynn Kennely, who ran the chamber for ever and a day. Won't say how long, but it was a long, long time. And we lost her unexpectedly and way too soon. So if you could join me in a little moment of silence for Lynn, I would appreciate that. Thank you. So the next thing I'm going to do before I jump into the public matters here is that while we have, we are gaining a new council member here this evening, we are also losing Willets' most senior, senior employee by some margin. And I'd like to take a moment here to acknowledge everything that Jerry has done for the community. I've got a little proclamation to read here, too. But I'm talking about Jerry Gonzalez, a police chief, who kind of is in one day taking off a uniform and putting on a three-piece suit. Pretty incredible. So if you will just join me here in honoring Jerry this evening, this is a proclamation by the city council recognizing Geraldo Jerry Gonzalez upon his retirement. Whereas Willets native son Jerry Gonzalez, better, well, Geraldo, better known as Jerry to all of us who know him, began his career as a part-time dispatcher for the Willets Police Department in 1985. And whereas in April 1987, after graduating from the police academy in Sonoma, Jerry embarked upon what would become a long and distinguished career as a sworn peace officer for the city of Willets. And whereas throughout the ensuing years, Jerry advanced in his career, holding the rank of sergeant from January 95 to May 98, when he then became captain and held that rank until October 2003, when he became the chief of police. Whereas during his long tenure, Jerry has demonstrated his deep commitment to his hometown, including as a member of the Willets Rotary Club, an instructor at Mendocino College, a substitute teacher for the Willets High School, returning to the roots of his early education, as well as coaching youth sports activities and devoting his time and financial resources to a myriad of local causes and serving on the boards over the years, including the Willets Unified School District, the Willets Kids Club, and the Little Lake Fire District. And whereas after devoting over 30 years to the Willets community and lost law enforcement, serving under six city managers and numerous council members, Jerry has chosen to continue his public service as an elected official. And whereas Jerry entered this world at the old Howard Hospital, attended Willets schools until he left for college, after which returning home to work his entire career for the city of Willets Police Department. And whereas after 13 years as chief, he has earned the distinction of being one of the longest-serving chiefs in the state of California. And Jerry is the epitome of a local boy done good. Now therefore, I, Bruce Burton, the mayor of the city of Willets, do hereby commend Jerry Gonzalez for his many years of service to the city of Willets and extend our collective and heartfelt appreciation and gratitude for his dedication to the safety and well-being of our community and certainly wish him all the best in his next adventure. So I'd like to take a moment and pass this down. Okay. So we will move along into public matters. First item there is adopt a resolution declaring the results of the general municipal election held on November 8th, 2016.
Can I make that motion?
You surely can.
I move we adopt a resolution declaring the results of municipal election.
Second. You can pick whichever one you want if you want.
We've got it down.
Anxious to get started anew. We have a roll call vote, please.
Yes, Councilor Stransky?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madrigal?
Yes.
Ornestein?
Yeah.
Yes. So that concludes our duties up here.
Not quite. Not quite. We'll see. We should probably turn it over to Adrienne. She'll, she'll set us straight.
It's the roast.
Uh, let's see. I would first like to invite Heather Gerwitz from Congressman Jared Huffman's office up to the podium. And we would like to start with Councilmember Madrigal.
Okay. So, alright.
It doesn't apply in the room.
Okay. Oh, okay. I can do this. Alright, never mind. Good, uh, good evening. My name is Heather Gerwitz and I'm the Mendocino County field representative for Congressman Jared Huffman. And I am very pleased to be here tonight to recognize city council member Holly Madrigal and for her service to the city of Willets. So this is what it says. So in recognition of your enduring contributions to the city of Willets, your efforts as a member of the city council from 2004 to 2016, including your service as mayor and as a member of many committees, has enhanced the development of Willets in numerous ways. Additionally, the time you have invested as a board member for the Community Foundation, Willets Economic Localization Well Board, and the Kinetic Carnival will have many positive, positive lasting impacts. Thank you for your public service.
And then before you go on to the next one, I'd like to make a few comments about Holly.
Hi, boy.
As the youngest councilperson to be elected to the Willet City Council, you serve as an inspiration to our local youth, many of whom are here tonight, about what it means to truly make a difference in your community. You have brought your passion, energy, and ideas to the city council for the last 12 years. It has been a privilege, privileged to serve as your city manager, and I deeply appreciate it, your support, and wish you much success in all of your future endeavors.
Thank you. Oh, my goodness. That is lovely.
And you have a plaque for your years of service of the city.
And I just, really quickly, I already cried to Adrienne the other day. I just want to say honestly what an honor and a privilege it has been to serve here. We could not do this without incredible city staff. I just want to say, not just in the executive office, but all of the city employees really make us look good. You know, we get to be up here and cut budgets and, you know, make some tough decisions, but really it's the employees of the city of Willets that make it happen. So it's been an honor. Thank you.
Holly, I want you to know that I appreciate you're on the council, and I've never been on a council without you.
Yeah.
You've been here the full time that I've been here. And I thank you very much for all your help and your leadership as mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also just really have enjoyed being your colleague. It's just you're an inspiration, your energy, your diplomacy, your vision. It's really been a pleasure, and I hope we continue to collaborate in every way that we can.
I'm sure that we will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
So that's one of the few prerogatives I get to do as a member.
There you go. You give me that stare, that laser stare. Yeah, like Larry, we have served, I have been on...
A little before me.
A little before you, then I took a vacation for four years and then came back again. But it's been, it's been a lot, it's been a real joy working with you. You're, you're like my little puppy dog. You just run around and I just enjoy watching you, your energy, and, you know, while I sort of plod along behind you. And it's very good. I really enjoyed working with you. And I know you're not finished. You have a few other plans in the works, so I think we'll be seeing a lot of you in the future.
Thank you.
Well, I too, sat on both sides of you, on a lot of different things, as well as But there's never been a doubt that your, your heart's been for the city. And people have different ideas about what that is from time to time. It's a good run. Way to go.
Thank you, Bruce.
And now for the mayor, outgoing mayor. So Mayor Bruce Burton of the Willet City Council, we would like to recognize you for all that you have done as a Willet City Council member. Your efforts as a member of the city council from 1992 to 2004 and 2008 to 2016, including your time as mayor and as a member of many committees, has enhanced the development of Willets in numerous ways. Thank you for your public service.
Thank you. Pass along to Jared, I can still expect to play some music with him.
I would like to say a few words, starting with, it really is hard to find the words to express the deep gratitude that I and city staff have for all you've done for the city during your 20 years. Your leadership, your institutional knowledge, guidance, support, and generosity is simply unmatched. As well, I've appreciated your willingness to be a mentor to me and deeply value our friendship. All of us are going to miss your regular presence here at City Hall, but don't worry, we know where to find you. And I'd like to present this special plaque to you.
So that's what happens.
And then, I think we, do we should say something?
Well, yes, and Bruce might want to say something, but, you know, as you've mentioned, we are often occasionally on different, different sides of a particular issue, and that has been incredibly valuable to me. I think that you really represent a large part of Willets, and I especially feel, after all these years working together, I feel that you are a true statesman. It's been a pleasure serving with you.
Bruce, I would like to thank you very much for your service, and I also am glad that I gave you an A when I had you in class. I thank you very, very much for all the things that you've done for the community. And the one thing that sticks out in my mind is getting together with you and Brooktrails and clearing up the Brooktrails lawsuit. That was a huge thing to do without lawyers, and that's the reason it happened. Thank you.
I've only had the pleasure of overlapping for four of your 20 years of service, but I have really appreciated your knowledge and your dedication. You really know Willets and you really care about Willets, and it shows. And like Holly, we haven't always been on the same side of all the issues, but I think there's no doubt in my mind that you really care and that you represent your point of view well, and that's an important, we don't, you know, this is a diverse community, we don't all think alike, so it's really important that we, that we honor that. And I appreciate how you've brought your skills and your knowledge to the city council and to the mayorship.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have to say, Bruce and I have a bit of a history that sort of drama's played out in public over the last 12 years, I guess. And, you know, I take responsibility for a lot of it because I'm an East Coast hard hit, smart ass kind of guy that likes to always fight. But working with Bruce and clashing with him has been very educational for me, and I feel it's been like a growth industry. I have grown, I feel I've become a better person working with this guy. You know, he makes you stop and think. And there have been many times when we've been violently opposed, you know, to each other on, on a particular issue, but he would come up with a compelling argument. And just the way he puts it, he's a very intelligent guy, and the way he puts it, I just had to stop and think and consider, and more often than not, I changed my mind to his way of thinking. Not always. But, you know, I, we had lunch the other day, and I went on like this for about half an hour, and he finally told me, shut up already. But I, I really appreciate having been associated with Bruce, and I think he brought a lot to the party, and I'll kind of miss you.
Likewise. I'll keep it real short because I think that it's more exciting to welcome the new people than to kick the old people out. But I have, but I have to say that, you know, I have had the privilege of serving with pretty much the whole Stransky family now, starting with Virginia, and then Tim and Larry. So it's been a good run, and I appreciate the staff, I appreciate, I appreciate the quality of our police department. You know, and it's, and a big part of it is what didn't happen, not necessarily what does happen, but what has, what didn't happen and that is sometimes more valuable than anything else. And, you know, I, I have, over the years, watched mayors deal with issues in their police department, and it's a very, very, it can be very stressful for everyone. And so I'm just as thankful of what did happen. I'm really proud of the freeway being done, proud of a lot of the things that we've accomplished, and, and, thank you.
We have something a little special for you.
Uh-oh.
Beyond the plaques and the...
The new Harley.
That'd be something.
That looks scary.
Old man's eye, alright? Should all acquaintance be forgot and never brought to mind? Should all acquaintance be forgot and the old man's eye?
This is Bill Evans, probably the, one of the best banjo players on the, that I know. And my mentor, my mentor for years, the producer of my CD, played duets on it, just an amazing banjo player. I'm blown away that you're here. Thank you.
So now we're going to have a brief res... We are reconvening the meeting of the Willet City Council and moving into the organizational aspect of the meeting, at which time city staff presides over this, and then once the mayor and vice mayor are appointed, then the gavel will be, will be turned over to the mayor. So our first order of business is to swear in our newly elected and re-elected council members. So if I could have Jerry and Suprina and Madge join me on the floor. Please, wait, raise your right hands and repeat after me. I'm just forgetting your name, of course. You, Matt Strong, Jerry Gonzalez, and Suprina Rodriguez solemnly swear or affirm...
I...
...that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That you will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
...to the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That you take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
...without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
...or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that you will, will well and faithfully discharge the duties...
I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
...upon which you are about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. So at this time, I'd like to call for nominations for mayor.
I would like to nominate Ron Ornestein, please, for mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And any discussion?
Yes. I would like to ask my fellow council members why. I have been the vice mayor for four consecutive years. I am totally qualified and in line to be the mayor this year, and I'm just wondering why.
I have great admiration for what you have brought to the city council, and that I assume you will continue to, that you really do your homework, you're very conscientious, you, you know, you have contributed a lot and will continue to. I feel like one of the most important things in the mayorship is someone who everyone feels they have an open door and that they are respected and they're heard. And I feel that there are times, when you're not aware of it, that people don't get that feeling with you. And I think that's really a critically important quality that's very, you know, it's, can't be measured exactly, but I really feel that a welcoming and open-hearted appearance and sincere appearance of the mayorship is really very important to how the city council is represented. So I, I have some reluctance on that score.
Okay.
Ron, I got the, I guess, I'm going to say the impression, because I spoke with some folks, and they, again, I think communicated the same thing that Madge had said, so I was, believed that there would not be the support, and so that's why.
Okay.
My reasoning is nothing personal, it's simply that I'm looking for, and individuals in the community have expressed to me, that they're looking for a mayor that's enthusiastic, that's involved in our community in many different aspects. And I just, I, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't had time to serve on the council, and I am looking at it from a community perspective, but that, that's the reasoning.
Okay, thank you all.
Roll call vote.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Ornestein?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
No.
Stransky?
Yes.
Strong?
The motion fails. Are there any other nominations?
One nominee, Jerry Gonzalez.
Is there a second?
I'll second that nomination.
Any discussion?
I wanted to say, I know that Jerry is very well respected in the community, and that I know he is very open-hearted and listens well and is going to have the trust of the council and of the community. And I think that's really important to me in a mayor's position. That's why I can do it.
Roll call vote.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
No.
Rodriguez, excuse me?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations. Before we do seat reassignments, I'd like to call for nominations for the vice mayor.
I would like to nominate Larry Stransky for vice mayor.
Is there a second?
No second.
And any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ornestein?
Yeah.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
That was too long in that chair, I'll tell you that.
And not far. So how do we, do I sit here?
Could you hand me the water?
Oh, those are mine, actually. I put them there in case you forgot his.
They're not as good on me, but not as good as on you.
Okay, it's all yours.
All right. I guess we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Public communications.
Oh, public, sorry, public communications, I apologize. Item two, public communications. The council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person, so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard, to expel out matters and avoid repetition. Whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commission boards and agencies will not be prohibited. No action shall be taken. Do we have any public communication? And even though the microphone doesn't elevate your voice here, if you could state your name for the TV audience.
Hello, can you hear me? I'm Lisa Epstein, president of the Chamber of Commerce, and there is concern among the merchants about signage along Highway 101, and there were some who would like to share some of their concerns. We appreciate what is being done, and we understand that the city is working hard on our behalf, but we would like to also share some additional comments, right?
Hi, I'm Greta Conny. I am a co-owner of the book juggler Downtown. Congratulations and welcome to our new council members. I wanted to share with you that it's been several weeks since the bypass opened, and our business is already feeling it. We are down almost thirty percent so far since it opened. We're very concerned. We know that Dusty, our city planner, is working hard to get the signage addressed on the highway, the no services signs are on. We're very glad about that. We would like to see better directional signage once people actually get off the freeway, so they know how far it is to downtown Willets, they know how far the services are away. Imagine you're a traveler getting off the highway, it's dark, you pull off, it's a country road, it's not very well lit, you have no idea how long it's gonna take you to get to the gas station, or the grocery store, or the hospital, whatever it is you're trying to get to. We'd like better signage there, and we hope that Caltrans is taking those requests seriously.
I agree one, my name is Marie Blancus, and I've had a retail business license since 1992, and I've had storefrontage since 1992 and continue to do, and I agree 100% with her, with her, the percentages that are down, the numbers, and the customers, and I can tell you dozens and dozens and dozens, I'm tracking it in my store, that, and I'm hoping that maybe you can keep us in the loop about helping out with signage, with meetings, that we really need something, and I know it's been six weeks, but the numbers are kind of devastating. And the customers that say, that, like a lady today, just got all, went as far north, and she lives in this area, and I hear this from people that live here, that it's so dark, that they, they just get, they're like, oh my god, I'm already past Willets, and she turned around and came back, and I'm hearing that by dozens of my customers, that at least will have come back and shopped, where instead of those that are just going on, go, oh, I'll just come back next week, maybe they won't come back next week. But I'm hearing, and I agree totally with her, and I want to help out in any way I can, and be on any committees, okay? Thank you, and congratulations, I'm happy.
I just wanted to say, I think all of the merchants expected a downturn, we all knew the reality of that. I just don't think we expected it to be quite this bad quite so quickly. And so, any help that the city council and city staff can give us to put Willets back on the map, and make sure that those travelers know we're still here, and we still have a lot to offer, would be greatly appreciated.
We all agree. That's exactly what we all have to say. We've noticed that the signs are confusing, especially at nighttime, too. I mean, we all know where we're going, but if you didn't know where you were going, you would just keep going past Willets, you wouldn't stop. Go ahead.
Okay, okay, I was wondering, do you guys have any real influence with Caltrans about signage, or is it just, is there anything that you can really do, anybody you can really talk to?
John, I called, I'm on MCAG, and I talked to Phil Dahl two weeks ago about this. And I talked to Congressman Wood, and I have called Caltrans, and just to tell them the very same thing that you guys are saying, and you can see what happened. I think somebody told me tonight that they have moved the services sign away, is that correct?
Yes. Temporarily.
Gone? Okay, so, that's the best, you know, that I have done, and I personally have done this.
Yeah, having dealt with Caltrans quite a bit, unless they decide to do it, it doesn't matter what we say, unless they decide to do it, you know.
There, can I?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Deb, I don't remember her last name, but she's the head of signage at Caltrans, and she is coming in the next couple of days to do a review of all the signage. And she has all the requests from the city. Dusty has sent requests since before the bypass went in for signage. She has the entire list, and she's gonna be working with another guy at Caltrans to prioritize them, based on safety and guidance. And they can, she's gonna be placing, she told me that they're gonna be working on placing emergency signage. They can order limited number of seven-day signs, and 21-day signs, and then the regular ones can take up to three months. So she's gonna be working on that, and it is on her radar, because I think of the calls, the city has reached out to, you know, way of, like, elected officials and such. So, I think, I was encouraged just to talking with her, and I did send out an email to the membership this afternoon, saying, kind of summarizing that.
Good job.
Well, I mean, it's.
So, we do have our elected legislative reps working diligently on our behalf, and rattling chains wherever they can. They've driven it themselves, they've seen it firsthand, and they are equally as concerned as we all are. So, we will keep everyone posted. I think that the Caltrans signage person will be here in the next couple of days, Dusty, is that right?
That's correct, that's what was recently said.
You know, I made a focus during my campaign that this was one of the important things, the business community, and I think Larry shares my philosophy when it comes to the importance of this. Being a business owner himself, I think it's important, and so, there may come a time when I ask for some squeaky wheels, but at this point, this is what's happening, and again, keep that dialogue up. I mean, I've been driving around, I've been asking businesses, you know, since I was elected, everywhere I went, I said, how's business, how's business? I've heard that fast food, you know, you talk to somebody one day, and it's up, it's down, et cetera, but obviously, until we get a little track history, but you guys are the boots on the ground, and you're gonna be able to tell us real quickly what you're feeling, so, I encourage you to communicate with us.
Sure, if you need any help from us, or for us to participate in any of the meetings, whatever it is.
You may very well hear.
Call available anytime.
I know, that's, I met with Lisa during the break, and I told her I want to meet with her, because I want to start a dialogue with the chamber, and I know not everybody belongs to the chamber, but I think that, Lisa, I assume all of you here belong to the chamber, and so, I'd like to coordinate with her, and then that way, when we're talking with Dusty and the county and the state, that we have one voice. And I've gone before legislative bodies before on other issues, and sometimes you do need that squeaky wheel. So there may come a time when I say, come on down, I'll probably ask Lisa to coordinate that.
I'd be happy to squeak for you.
Thank you.
Squeak up.
Yeah.
I totally agree, and I think the signage really needs to be vastly improved, and it needs to happen quickly. But in the meantime, and actually, ongoingly, I want to urge all the people that live in the Willets community to go really shop local. Even if it costs you a couple bucks more, don't drive all the way to Ukiah and Mall Mart, buy it here. These shops have everything we need, and it serves our community, the money stays local. It's really, really important, so, that'll help a little bit. We still need the highway people to come off the highway and help us out, but all of us local people, use your local merchants, please.
I just have one suggestion that you could do right now. You've come here tonight to share what you're experiencing. If you could provide written testimonials to that point, and maybe the chamber could be the gatekeeper on that.
There's a survey link on the top, on the website, willets.org, and there's a link to survey, it's simply a one-sentence thing that says, has the bypass affected you, and it's, please tell us how. We're trying to collect anecdotal records. It's on purpose that it's not, it's not, it's not multiple choice, you want to hear it in your own words, how has it affected you. So I encourage you, please, go there and fill it out, so we can have that written, that written record, and we'll use that to advocate for you.
Where did I begin?
Willets.org. There's hot deals there, too, the merchants are mostly on deals and systems, and it's all, it's a place to go.
Well, and I think that bears witness that we need to work together on this.
And it's gonna cost more to shop local, by the way, that's true.
Especially if you count your gas.
All right, any other public communication, and thank you for coming.
I do have something to say.
Go ahead, Pete.
Okay, so I think we're all clear on the signage, that things need to change. You know, I can tell you that with a new, fairly new council, you know, three or five, it's gonna be, well, two or five, but still, it's quite a change. We do have a resource in Dusty, and he is, he gets it, he gets it. Now, I'm really curious to see how the new council will react to his tutelage, and to, you know, he's hired to do the job, let's hope that, you know, we can get results. The business community is the face of the town, and I know there's a lot of apprehension. We did know, like Greta said, that there would be a downturn. Ultimately, I think, we'll be okay, but it's, we are absolutely greatly going to, we have to rely on the city and the city council to be, to champion for us. We do have a partner in the business owners, but really curious to see what happens in the next year or two. A little discouraged that it's gonna be, you know, three, four years before we get safe streets. Safe streets are completely unacceptable for pedestrians, completely. The traffic has sped up as a result of the less traffic, certain times it has absolutely sped up, I think most business owners will tell you that. So, it really curious to see, you know, and again, when we say we will be there to work with you folks, we will. But this is gonna be interesting to see how this all works out, because we absolutely are gonna rely on you folks, and you can rely on us.
Any other public communication? I do want to recognize Bruce Carpenter is out there in the audience, he is the Ukiah Commander for CHP, and he's been in my tenure with the police department, and before, CHP's been a good partner with the local police department, working with us hand in hand, and sometimes helping us address speed issues during our staffing issues at times, so, and with Bruce, I think that'll continue, so. All right, now the consent calendar. We have.
Is E gone? Is E gone?
Okay, we have items A, council minutes for November 9th, December 6th of 2016, dispersment journals for warrants. Item C, resolution authorizing the change of authorized signature for the city Willets checking account. Item D, resolution authorizing certain staff to transfer funds between local agency investment fund and savings bank. Item E was pooled, and item F, letter supporting EDFC's application for the new loan funds for the intermediary, freelending, so.
I shall move.
One second.
And then, I, Councilmember Gonzalez, I have a question. I know that Jerry and I were both present at the last two meetings, but we weren't sitting on the council. Could you defer to legal, are we able to, are we able to vote on the consent calendar?
Specifically the minutes, I would agree that if you weren't present, weren't a participant, that you wouldn't be voting on that item.
Could we pull item E from the consent calendar?
Yes.
So I guess we're voting on items B, C, and D, and F.
Accept, yeah.
All right, all those, any further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Ornstein?
Yeah.
Stransky?
Yes.
Marigan Ball?
Yes. Should, Jim, on the minutes, can the other councils, no, I guess we don't have a quorum there, how do we deal with that? Oh, no, actually, no, Madge, actually, Madge.
You have three, you have three qualified council members.
So we could pool that and do that.
I move approval of item A.
Second.
And a motion, a second, and those that can vote.
Aye.
Ornstein?
Aye.
Yes.
All right, passes, all right. Item five, information report, informational reports, building inspection activity reports, November 2016. Business license activity reports, November 2016. Those aren't proper action, right? Right to appeal. Persons who are dissatisfied with decisions of the city council may have the right to review that decision by a court. The city has adopted section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days the time within which the decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. Commissions and agencies and authorities. Item seven, the Willet City Council meets concurrently as the Willet City Planning Commission and the Willet City Successor Agency. I don't see anything listed. So we're down to item eight, city manager reports and recommendations.
So, item 8A is discussion and possible action to approve a travel request for the mayor, new council members and city manager to attend the new mayor's and council members' academy through the League of California Cities in Sacramento on January 18th through the 20th of 2017. I'm bringing this request forward to you, because this is not a budget item. In the last few years, council has drastically reduced, and I think even eliminated, much of the travel budget. But on occasions like this, where we have incoming council members and new mayors, I think it's a justifiable request to make. It would require a budget amendment. The cost is $923 per attendee, plus miscellaneous expenses, and that would come out of the general fund, the council, city clerk and council fund, is that correct, Kathy?
Yeah.
So, with the reconfiguration of the council, we would need three, you, Larry and myself authorized to go to that and incur. Oh, Suprina, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but not Larry necessarily, as vice mayor.
That's right, I'm sorry, Suprina, Jerry and myself.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes, I would like to move approval of that expense item. Can, can I speak to it?
Well, let's get a second for discussion. Do I have a second?
I hear. Check it.
All right, now we can have discussion.
I was the only new council member four years ago, and I attended it, and it was very helpful. So I do think that as a, for an incoming council member and a new mayor, to be able to get the benefit of not only a lot of workshops, and also meeting other people, I think was really worth doing. So I recommend that we send our new council members and our new mayor.
Yeah, and I'd like to say that when I started on the school board, we have our own organization, and I paid for that, because I thought that it would be valuable out of my money, and so one of the things I asked Adrian was, what? And so one of the things I asked Adrian was, "What association does the city council, are they affiliated with?" And what can I do to better myself as a councilwoman? And so I'm very much interested in attending. I see that.
This class will also include the mandated AB 1234 ethics course. And that's something that city council members have to take and other city staff have to take every two years. So this will give you your certification on that. And then other council members will find out who has to do, if any of the rest of you are up for that yet. And if so, we'll arrange a class. It's...
Every two years?
Every two years.
Any other discussion? The only thing I would ask is if this passes, that we kind of carpool over and do some things. So, all right, call for the vote.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Marneski?
Yeah.
Strachey?
Yes. All right. Item B, verbal reports.
Thank you. We don't have anybody here tonight from Public Works or Water and Wastewater, and so I wanted to provide some updates in those areas as well as a few other ones. In Public Works, obviously, the rain is upon us and the storm drains are working well throughout town, although our Public Works supervisor noted that Outlet Creek is backing up. And that's just something that we experience every year. At our water treatment facility, we have received approval from State Water Resources Control Board to switch from chlorine gas to liquid chlorine, which is much safer for our crew and will result in a significant cost saving. So that's been something they've been working on for a while and we just got the approval to proceed with that. At the wastewater treatment facility, the third blower will go online next week and then that will complete that project. And then moving on to some other updates, we have a few technology updates that are occurring. We have a new domain that we're rolling out with our city email. So all staff will have new city emails. We'll make an announcement about this when everything is finally done, but it should be in the next week or so. And so the new city email addresses for council members and staff will be first initial and their last name at cityofwillets.org. We also have purchased tablets for our council members for city business. For example, agenda packets, emails, and other city-related assignments, the various boards and committees that they will serve on. And that is, that presents a cost savings to us of about $8,000, Kathy, for not running paper packets twice a month for the year.
It's $8,000 a year, you said, right?
Pardon me?
$8,000 a year?
Yes. And then over in our police department, obviously, we've had a few changes lately. Last Friday, I swore in our new interim chief, Scott Warnock, who's in the back. And upon swearing him in, that effectively put Jerry into retirement as the chief of Scott has been working with the Willet PD since May of 2008, so he's no stranger over there. And he'll serve in that role as we progress through the recruitment process for a new chief. That process has been underway for about a month and we anticipate holding interviews in mid-January. If all goes well, we could have a new chief in March. So we all look forward to that. Related to that, we've made several acting appointments at the PD, which were necessary due to a few impending departures, too, in particular Sergeant McNelly, who has been with the PD for 10 years. He is retiring at the end of this month. And Sergeant Donoghue, who has been with us for the better part of 13 years, is relocating due to family needs. And so we hate to say goodbye to both of them, but we will be saying goodbye. And we made a couple of acting sergeant appointments in the meanwhile, with the idea that when we have a new chief on board, they'll make the permanent appointments for their staffing needs. That's all I have.
All right. Department recommendations. City clerk?
I would just like to welcome all of you aboard.
Finance?
I would like to also welcome you and look forward to working with each of you. I think it's an exciting time, especially while we're going through the bypass and the revenues and working, trying to figure out how, where the revenues are going to come from. This week, the auditors are in the office. They'll be here through Friday and possibly coming back again. As you know, we had our previous auditors for more than 10 years. I think it was 11 years total. So we have a brand-new company that's coming in and they're getting to know everything and looking under every, everything. And also, we are ready to roll out the online payments and emails. We're waiting on our website to be corrected so that it'll have the link in there to where you can go and do that. There will also be mobile apps and all kinds of good fun stuff that people can download and pay their utility bills.
Will you still be sending out monthly bills?
We will, for those that want to.
But, so if you don't get a paper bill, how does that work? If you do a strict...
It will be emailed.
I'm sorry?
It will be emailed.
A notice to pay the bill? Okay, good.
We have a slight surcharge on people that pay by credit card and that will be built into that as well.
That charge will go away, but the third-party vendor that we will be using, they will have their own fee, but it is less than the amount that we were charging.
So...
Be a slight reduction in what the city pays, but the city will cover that, not the customer?
No, the customer would pay for it still.
Oh.
Customer still pays for it, but it's less than what they were paying before.
So in other words, if you pay online using a credit card, there will be a charge?
2.75%.
Okay.
And we currently charge 3%.
And we can, and they can still bring a check into City Hall as well, correct?
They can, or they can do it by phone or online for 50 cents.
It's a big town, it's hard to travel around here. Okay, thank you.
Human resources.
I have no issues at this time. I would like to also welcome all of you. I'm looking forward in your term to seeing expanding and prosper as Willets.
And legal.
Likewise, I welcome especially our new members. I hope to work with you and provide whatever support I can for you if you have any questions that call for a legal analysis or collusion I'd like to work with you on, whatever that might be. I'm glad to hear that you're going to the Sacramento Seminar, put on by the League of California Cities. It's an excellent organization. They really put on terrific workshops and they prepare really top-level educational materials, one of which is a PAMP that came out this last year called Open in Public 5, I think it is. It's the league's paper on the Brown Act and you'll need to read that thoroughly. It's available online. I think Kathy or Adrian or I could give you the link to it. And it's a good resource. If you have a question, you can go right to it. It's an excellent source.
Good. I think when you set up our new email there, you could send our first email, Kathy. All right.
Before you leave admin, I have a question. I'm not sure which one of the admin people would know this, but the Form 700 is due soon. And I got an email this morning, so that's legitimate?
We're going to do them online instead.
Okay. It looks suspicious and I didn't want to open it up because you didn't know. So this is how we're going to fill them out? But it came on my private email, not on the city address. And I was kind of, that sort of set off a red flag for me.
We'll have to check to see if that's what you put on last year's Form 700.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And community development planning.
Full disclosure, I spend quite a bit of money renting videos from Main Street Music as well as buying beer from Chonaky Pub. I won't tell you which one I spend more money at, but, and, you know, I came up here thinking that I was going to give you guys an update on the highway signage and staff's efforts to work with Caltrans to get additional, very much needed signage, letting folks know that Willet exists and we do have services that they want. But instead, I'm compelled to just say how lucky I feel in that, you know, it's certainly my job to work on behalf of the city to try to get additional signage. But to have, without asking or requesting, you know, our political leaders, our decision-makers, our community members, our community leaders, to be making those same requests and working towards the same goal, you know, makes me feel very good. It continues to instill in me that, you know, even though I'm the one planner for the city, I'm not alone. We have a lot of very bright, dedicated people in this community who I found myself relying on to get the job done. So I very much appreciate that and recognize that I'm lucky for having that type of help. It's not like that in every community, I don't think. Very quick recap. Again, staff has had a list request into Caltrans, their sign coordinators, for a while. We recognize that they have a big district. It's not just Willet. It's not just Mendocino County. It's not just Mendocino, Humboldt, Trinity, Indalique County, Delmore, et cetera. And we're just a little piece of highway in that whole grand scheme of things. But we have been able to get some action already. You heard that some of the no-service signs that were somewhat confusing to a lot of drivers have been removed. The sign coordinator is going to be back in Willet later this week to do another assessment. And we should expect some additional signage to be put in place in the near future. Typically, in a normal situation, it's about three months from when they order a sign till it's built and delivered and then at some point stalled. Staff is looking to expedite that process. And I have to tell you, my dealings with Caltrans staff, they also get it and I have no doubt that they're going to be doing what they can to try to expedite the situation. Their first priority when looking at signage is safety. The second priority is making sure drivers know where things are. So to that extent, we're working with them to try to prioritize and establish additional off-highway signages that would let drivers know where services are. So it might be a redundancy of the general service signs that you see already, but after you get off the exits, again, pointing to Willet, again, pointing to the services. And I think what also is important and is included in staff's request is that you give us the mileage, the distance to those services as well. One personal experience, I've heard this from other people, but I witnessed myself coming home back into Willet Sunday night. I get off the freeway, the two people in front of me, they get off the exit as well, but it appears they weren't quite sure where Willet was, how far away it was, what types of services there were. We talk in a Chevron gas station, we talk in a Ma and Pa with one pump that closes at 4:30. Again, it's dark, you can't quite see the city when you get off the exits, and the signage there is just not getting the job done. And what they did is they turned around and got back on the freeway. And I have no doubt that if we had some additional signage, they were prepared to come into town and get gas or food or whatever they were looking for. But, you know, I think it's, we don't want to just rely on Caltrans to save the day. They certainly have a part to play and what we're requesting is not out of the ordinary from what we see in other communities. And staff's going to be bringing forward a reservation for the council to potentially support and have some additional downtown Willet-type signage placed on the highway. And Caltrans staff has recently been able to share some of the rules of how we get to some of those additional signage requests. So we'll certainly be working towards that goal and doing whatever part that we can. The city also has a role to play. We have opportunities to establish what are called these Gateway Monument signs, the City of Willet, Gateway of the Redwoods, City of Willet. We have it going on, whatever that motto wants to be. We also have the opportunity to establish billboards along the highway. There's been discussion at the RebiD Ed Committee level for a number of months about establishing like a civic-type billboard that certainly wouldn't advertise any individual business but would be looked on to be a catalyst for local economic growth throughout. So that's an opportunity that we're exploring and talking with local property owners about turning up on. There's also an opportunity to connect the dots within Willet. You're getting on Highway 20, you have no idea that downtown Willet is just to the left or the right of you. You came here to see the skunk train and when I was down in Pasadena, the people I met knew about Willet because of the skunk train. So that's a destination for folks. But you might be at the depot and have, again, no idea that downtown Willet is right ahead or Roots of Motive Power is right across the street. So, again, looking to connect the dots with wayward signing. I've also been able to talk to a number of businesses and they're already adapting some of their strategies. They said they've spent some more energy trying to grab some online advertising as well as TV advertising. Folks are trying to reach out how they can to the Brook Trails residents as well, let them recognize again that they're part of our community as well and a lot of our services are tailored to them as well. So just wanted to make the point that we're not just looking at Caltrans to save the day and we're also looking inward and then recognizing the communities, talking to each other, adapting these strategies as well. So that's what I have to share. Thanks.
Thank you, Dusty. And code enforcement. John, do you have anything?
The lean and code enforcement.
That's it?
The lean and code enforcement. Good evening and as well, welcome to the new members and really eagerly looking forward to working with you. I've worked with all of you in the past. It's always been good. Let's keep it up. A little nuke, maybe Adrian has passed this along, but yesterday, we finished the roof on the gymnasium at Grove Middle School and it came out really well. It was actually a little more dangerous than we expected, but the job came out well and I'm thinking 30 or 40 years from now, we might have to look at it again, but I think it's going to be good for that. And we're working with Willet's Unified School District to come to an agreement on how to handle these facilities that we own and they use. Let's see. Oh, and we're, as you know, I'm already started on the tennis courts, so we'll get there. But to the general public, please keep in mind, we need some help. We need some volunteers to come give us a hand on this stuff. It's not really particularly difficult stuff, but, you know, we're down to the bone on staff and budget and all of those things. If the community wanted to pitch in and help, we'd get there sooner. That's all. I just also want to let you know that I'm working on the triennial building code adoptions. The building codes, the 2016 building codes become effective January 1st and trying to get our ordinances aligned and passed so that we can enforce that legally, basically. The situation, though, is that if we don't adopt it, state law says that we will enforce it as the state has approved it. This gives us a chance to take a look at it and tune it to our own needs. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And public safety. Do you have anything, Scott?
Well, it's supposed to flood possibly in the next couple of days. So if anybody needs sandbags or sand, go to the west police department out there and help yourself with those bags. And the department still exists even though I've been the chief for a few days.
So far, so good.
I have nothing else to report.
Okay. Thanks, Scott.
Can I say something about the sandbags? Just to piggyback onto the sandbags, that is a self-serve station. The limit is 10 bags per person. It really is for... It really is for residential use. So, any businesses that are, especially larger businesses, they need to obtain those elsewhere, I think.
And I know that Mendo Mill and those folks carry sandbags from a commercial end of it, so. And Public Works and Engineering, do we have anything?
No.
All right. City Council Committee reports. MCAG?
It's me. We had a meeting on the 5th of December, and it was just to clean up the old business and hear the public and also the unfunded, or yeah, unfunded needy transit things that we need to do, routes, new routes and stuff, and we heard that. Staff report on the recommendations from November 1st, which was the unfunded meeting, and we acted on that and voted on that. We had an audit, which was by Michael Baker International, and we did very well on that, and it was approved. That was about it. Thank you.
And LAPCO, is anybody here?
Well, that's Holly's assignment, and I did reach out to her to see if there was anything she wanted me to report out, and there was nothing.
All right. MTA?
That would be me.
Okay.
And we met on December 5th, and things were pretty much on track. The general manager, relatively new general manager, is tightening the budget here and there, and so, the operating expenses are coming in a little below budget, but the ridership and revenue is not quite as good as it would like to be. So, but, you know, we're pretty much on track, and they're buying replacement equipment as they can with new buses and so forth. Nothing unusual to report.
Okay. And MSWA?
Have not met.
Have not met, okay. League of Cities?
That was Holly.
Yeah.
There was a special meeting that the League, our division hosted in Ukiah a couple of weeks back, and that was needed because Holly was the second vice president and would have become the first vice president. But since she left the council, they needed to pick somebody else, choose somebody else for that. And so, they did that. I don't remember who that was now, but Holly and myself and Jerry attended that meeting.
And Water and Wastewater Systems Committee?
Has not met.
All right. And REBYED?
Has not met.
Finance Committee?
Has not met.
Ad hoc committees?
So, well, at the first January meeting, which is January 11th, that's when the mayor's appointments take place, and where we would look at our ad hoc committees to either keep them going if needed or establish new ones if needed.
Okay. And then, Economic Development and Finance Corporation?
Well, I'm very grateful that we passed that on the consent calendar, that we're supporting new funding because EDFC has basically used up all of their loan funds for businesses that need 50,000 or more, and so, hopefully, they'll get that grant. Or it's not a grant, but it's a revolving loan. I've missed a couple of meetings with my travels and whatnot, but they're cooking along. They're doing a lot of local funds, funding, supporting local businesses. When I say local, I mean Mendocino County. I'd like to get more in Willets, but people have to apply.
And Museum Advisory Board, that's you, right?
Yes, and we met pretty recently, and they're scrambling to make up for the fact that they were basically closed during the entire summer and early fall season, which is the best time for the museum. So, they're trying to get back on track, and the repairs to the roof and mold and all of that are being addressed bit by bit, but it's been a bit of a struggle.
Okay. And then, council member reports and recommendations.
I would like to thank Brad Walton for cleaning the parking lot, the Willets Rexall Parking Lot. He blocked it off and cleaned it last week, and it looks very nice. He got rid of just a ton of leaves, and so, I would like to personally thank him for doing that. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other council member?
Yeah, I'd like to say that, I'd like to show appreciation for those voters that put in the city limits that were able to participate in the election and elected me to office. I'm excited and energetic and the chat lunch ahead of me. I did shop local. Our Women in Business group had an activity this past Saturday, and we went around to many of the local businesses, found all kinds of great deals and wonderful items, so, thank you.
Two things. One is that, well, Willets Economic Localization was part of a new, well, an open house at what used to be the Willets Environmental Center, but it's now called the Willets Hub, and it's got four different organizations sharing the space, so it's a nice activity center for a lot of nonprofit groups. And we had a really wonderful open house with a lot of people and great food. And what was the other thing? I don't really remember. Well, I guess that's good enough then.
Okay. If it comes back. But I would like to echo what Suprina said. I'd like to thank the voters for participating, and thank you for the vote of confidence that you have in us, and...
That reminds me of what it was.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, it has to do with the election. I just wrote a letter to the Register voters saying that I think more of our precincts in Willets could be vote at polls, and then, maybe we wouldn't have such a tremendously long time waiting for all those absentee mail-in ballots, because six out of 10 precincts in the city are mail-in-only precincts. So, I think...
You think a lot of people wait till Election Day and drop them off there?
And then, those are the very last ones to be processed. It takes very time-consuming to process the mail-in ballot. So, if any of you feel likewise, I think it's, not that they aren't trying their best, but three or four weeks before you find out election results is really a long time.
All right. I don't see anything under enactment of ordinances, so we're down to Gooden Welfare. I think the Gooden Welfare.
I have a couple of things. I wanted to share that Lynn Kennelley's Celebration of Life is going to be this Saturday, 17th, at 2:00 PM at Agapi Bible Church. It's a potluck, and so, if anybody is intending to go, it is a potluck for everybody to contribute in that way. And then, I didn't really have an opportunity earlier when your proclamation was presented to you, but I just wanted to let you know what a pleasure it's been working with you for the last seven years as a colleague. I've just appreciated you as a colleague and as a friend, and just wanted to share that Jerry and I have had the most interesting relationship, because when I came to the city, we started out as peers, and then I became his boss, and now he is one of my bosses. But I think that it's a testament to our respect for each other that we've been able to transition in these different roles with ease, and I expect that it will continue that way. And I'm just very excited for you as you embark on this new adventure in your career.
Well, thank you. Barry, do you have anything under Gooden Welfare? No, thank you. Ron? Mitch? Suprina?
I, you know, I'll just take the opportunity that I really want to work with folks in the community, and while there's some folks out there that shudder when folks in the community come up and talk to you, I've actually enjoyed it, even though sometimes people catch me at Safeway at the most inopportune time. If I'm telling you that, hey, I need to get home because my wife needs something for her cookies, and I'm not trying to put you off, it's probably true. But, and then, I've been out walking my dog lately, talking to people, and so, it's provided me another avenue to talk to people. So, as I edge into retirement and start a new career here, I welcome that interaction, and I welcome the interaction with our business community, and thank you.
And I don't see any closed session, so I guess, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I do so.